Good morning and welcome to the April 19th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. Join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's time of the meeting that we open it up to people if you want to say a few words to the county board. We limit you to five minutes. Seeing none in the audience this morning, we'll move on to item number two, the agenda review and adoption.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fahy to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of April 12th regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Workman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Udoman. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion again carries. Community announcements. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just one announcement. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Nor- Young America is having their honor banquet this Saturday at Wilkman Memorial Park. Program in the dinner starts at six. The doors open at 5:30. The keynote speaker is First Sergeant Ron Smith, who happens to be my neighbor and just a great individual. If you're interested in tickets, you can go to thehonorbanquet2022 event bright dot com. And the meal is going to be catered by Hillcrest, which is famous for their chicken. So if you're interested, go check that out this Saturday.
That was a good invitation. I heard about it at our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. So they did make it countywide. So anybody from the county that wants to attend, don't hesitate to reserve a spot. Any other community announcements? Commissioner Udoman?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to recognize the 69th Annual Easter Egg Hunt was had at downtown Chaska. The Chaska Legion Auxiliary puts that on, and it was absolute mayhem. Our two and a half year old got trampled, but ended up with 10 eggs, and it was, it was fun. It was, and it was cold, but there was a lot of people out there. So that's one of those community events that we love in our, right here in Chaska. I'm going to save my comments for Rod. I see you in the room. It's quite a day for us, for you. So I'll save those comments for a little bit later. And then finally, this past weekend was Easter. The churches were packed. Got a chance to see a lot of different people out and about, and I think it's a meaningful gesture within our community when we celebrate Easter for the reasons that it's here. So those are my comments.
Yeah, I think it's very important. Not only are we coming off of COVID, but just to get people back in church and for a great reason, Easter. So other community announcements. Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, as I stated earlier last week, the Chan Hassen Lions are having their pancake breakfast on Sunday morning at Chan Hassen Brewing, where there will also be a maple beer. And so I hope to see everybody there, including this board, and I'll buy that maple beer with your pancakes and sausage and everything else. So but and then yesterday was tax day and a hearty thank you to all taxpayers for paying. Not fun, not nice. I guess it's our civic duty, but on behalf of your government, thank you for paying your taxes.
You mentioned the pancake dinner breakfast, I should say. You forgot to say the time.
Sunday morning. I think we start at about 8:00 a.m. 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So sorry about that.
No, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the time. Some people attend early service, and there still should be time after service to head up there to try the pancakes. Community announcements. Just want to mention this Thursday, in connection with Carver County Public Health and the CAP Organization and the Bountiful Basket, there's going to be a food distribution at the former Gedney plant out here. The food distribution will start at noon and yeah, usually runs to about 1:30. In combination with the library, public health is going to answer a bunch of questions on COVID. April 30th, that's a Saturday from nine o'clock, that'll be held at the Watertown City Hall, and then again in May 7th at Norwood Young America Library. So there's been a lot of talk just recently about what's going on with COVID. So if you have some questions, you want to be part of the discussion, attend this forum. And now the biggest thing I want to mention under public announcements is the recognition of our Health and Human Service Director for the past number of years, Mr. Rod Franks. He's, I don't want to say retiring, but he's leaving Carver County, heading to a warmer climate, the coast of California, Monterey County. So I have some recognition here. I'd like to read and present to Rod. It's a resolution from the county that says, whereas Rod Franks' service to the residents of Carver County, both through his employment and community volunteer service shines as an example, and whereas Rod Franks worked for Carver County for nearly 17 years, starting as a school-linked, school-linked school supervisor before moving to the income support manager, and then heading our Health and Human Service Division as its director since 2015. And whereas Rod Franks served his community outside his county employment, as well as Chair of the City of Chan Hassen Parks Commission, as a member of the Chan Hassen Rotary Club, and a longtime member and Chair of Eastern Carver County School Board, and whereas Rod Franks dedication to our residents spans nearly all age groups, from supporting children and students in dealing with difficult, challenging topics, to leading efforts to support our county's aging population. And whereas his leadership of our Health and Human Service the last seven years includes leading the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, but also lead programming and initiative that makes Carver County among the healthiest in the nation. And whereas Rod Franks' humor, kindness, and generosity of spirit led him to don the unofficial title of Carver County's Chief Happiness Officer, which we really needed during this pandemic. Now therefore, the Carver County Board of Commissioners do hereby thank and recognize Rod Franks for his steady and positive leadership of Carver County employees and residents. With that, before I have Rod come up and present this to him, we're going to open it up. Board members have a few things to say about or to Rod. Commissioner Workman, we'll start at the end.
Well, Mr. Chairman, nobody likes a quitter. I'll start out with that because I'm Carver County's Debbie Downer guy, I think. No, I'm not. But you know, I've been around a long time. You know, I served in legislature. But always around the corner, wherever I was, it seemed like Rod was always there. In fact, I, he was always doing something and something different every time I saw him, I think, and because he was doing so much, but always good. And it was always, Rod's one of those guys that it's always good to run into and get information from. And I was shocked that he's giving up on this wonderful county, but I know the yearnings of warm weather or maybe different weather, but we're going to miss him dearly and a very unique and friendly and loving individual. And Rod, good luck.
Top that, Commissioner Udoman.
Well, we organized it so that a passing gift, we were going to have your head examined. Why the heck you would want to go to California? I don't know. But I did get a chance to go around town a little bit and ask people what they thought about you. Pastor Joel said, big loss to the community, and he's a, he's a big giant when it comes to our community. I overheard a comment in the hall that could not have been scripted, where somebody shared, you've always been accessible and passionate about what you do. You'll be missed. Somebody else shared, I've always looked at you as a mentor. Somebody else said, you may not have known this, but you believed in me before I believed in myself. And these comments continue. Our county administrator, tough loss for Carver County, but a good thing for Rod and his family. We were at a District 112 meeting last week, and I know that you served well as the chair for a number of years, responsible for getting a number of referendums passed and Chan Hassen High School built. Many people don't know that about you, but there was kind of a gasp in the room, and somebody said afterwards, he's always had the best interest of our community in mind, often 10 to 20 years into the future he's looking. And then I was at First Street, and somebody said, again, he hired me and believed in me, maybe even before I believed in myself. And so these are the things. Personally, I see you as a mentor. When I came in, the biggest chunk of the county that's hard to get your hands wrapped around is Health and Human Services. And I think I may be a little closer now. We never really arrived at that. But as you take in all the kudos, I want to point out a few of the observations of things that I've seen within the community. Steiner Kelting probably would not have happened without you and your vision. And now we have a mental health facility in our community, serving our community members. That wasn't possible without your leadership. The topics of homelessness, mental illness, and opioids, they were taboo subjects when you took over, and now we're talking about them in the mainstream. You developed the high five award within your team, and other people are taking note of that and taking recognition to our organization. That was, was the idea of you and/or your team. There's been material shifts in operating models, including Affordable Care Act, and you've responded to that with your team. I don't know all the people, but I know there's a coaching tree that have gone on to different things, not just promotional opportunities, but opportunities pursue their passion personally, and you've had a hand in that. And one of the things that I like is my understanding is you've done it all on budget. Sometimes you think about Health and Human Service, and people blow the budget, and they go above and beyond, but you've done it all on budget. So with that, I wanted to just grab the first quote that I saw when I had our first meeting in your office, and it says, it's amazing what you can do when you don't care who gets the credit. And I think that encapsulates you and your leadership style. So good luck, Rod, and bring those talents to California, and maybe we'll get to see you in warmer climates. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch.
Mr. Franks, I first got to know you a long time ago at the Mental Health Advisory Committees, a long time ago, and you and Chad facilitated the meetings, and unfortunately, he left us way too long ago. But you're here, and it's, it's very unusual to see someone involved in the community as much as you are to actually be leaving. And so it's a huge loss to the community. I would like to point out that if it doesn't work out in California, you're always welcome back here. And even though I know you like warmer climates, and we just, we just scraped frost again, and it is April 19th, and I'm sure they have frost there too from time to time. But you're always welcome back here, and it's a huge loss, not only for Carver County, but Eastern Carver County. You've served on many boards through your church and the school, and it's the best of luck to you in California, though.
Commissioner Fahy.
Rod, just wanted to say thank you, and just thank you for guiding the county through the pandemic and all of your leadership and just your skill set. And just as a fellow runner, just keep running and enjoy the warmer climate. Thank you.
Rod, I know you've forgotten more about HHS than I will ever know. The acronyms that you throw around there just floor me, and our kind of, our lives have crossed in kind of diff- different ways than most people would ever expect. I started working for the county on the planning commission before you even were a member of the county, but then you started working for the school district and, or through the county, you were working with the school district, I should say. And then I became elected to District 112 School Board. And when I got elected to Board of Commissioners, that left a vacancy. And who better to fill the vacancy than you? And obviously, you were elected a number of times after that, went on to become School Board Chairman, and then like most people, happy wife, happy life. It was nice that you could take your wife now to California, that she doesn't really care for this weather that we experience around here way too often. So good luck in the future. Don't ever hesitate to come back. Thank you very much. Administrator Hemsey.
I'll save most of my comments, Rod, for, we have a little ceremony, 11:30 to 1:00 in our EOC, and then a little more fun than that for the Chief Happy Officer Happy Hour. I think we're on Sham Brewery, right? One thing I'd say about Rod, besides, you don't know this, but he was our in-house therapist for our leadership team. We really needed it very frequently. So maybe we'll do that telecommuting therapy because we'll continue to need it. I'm still scratching my head why, why you're leaving, and I'll make more comments about that at noon. But, but I would close by saying, one thing about Rod, he cares. He cares about the employees, and he cares about the folks of Carver County. And you know, really bottom line for him, that's, that's shined through in everything that he did in his role. And by the way, Mr. Chair, I'd ask him to come up for a second.
Yes, say a few words if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Administrator Hemsey. I'm not going to say much because I certainly don't want to top all of what you've said. I think we'll just let that stand for itself. But I do want to say all of those things that you shared about me really couldn't have been done without the leadership that I was able to experience from you all, from the support, acknowledgement, and grace I received throughout my career from, from Administrator Hemsey, Dave, thanks. The support of our county attorney's office and administration, and most of all, just the fabulous team that I was able to work with, that came in to work every day, gave their best, and made me look good in the process. And so while it's so nice to hear all of those things that you might say about me and the work, what I know is none of those things could have ha- could have happened without the support of the great staff in HHS and the wonderful support that I've received from all of you. And so my thanks for a wonderful career here. I might just say, Chair Degler and I were speaking just before the meeting, and I moved into his, what became his district in 1991. And, and just for a few short years since that time have remained in his district, but I did make a little divergence into Commissioner Workman's district for a short period of time, so.
And then he came back.
But I came back. I just wanted to add that. When I moved into Chan Hassen, the population was 8,749 people. I remember that's what it said on the sign. So things have certainly changed, and I think that we've all worked together to change things for the better for the people here. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that.
Come up here, please. Thank you very much. That kind of tops off our community announcements. That's for darn sure.
Mr. Chair, if I could have just two quick ones?
Please.
I just, not to try to top that, I just want to remind everyone about two quick events over in Waconia. This Sunday, we have a, not only a pancake, but a pancake, waffle, and sausage breakfast. And while there's no beer served, you can walk right across the street, and they have Waconia Brewery right there, and then you can have a chocolate peanut butter porter. Even though it sounds wrong, it is delicious. And then I also like the, the Waconia Lions are going to have their, they're resurrecting their Wild Game Dinner. They haven't had it in a couple of years, obviously with COVID, and they have a new venue. It's going to be at the Fairgrounds, and that is on April 30th. So last time we were there, I think we had Armadillo, which was, which is delicious, I guess I have to say. Tastes like chicken, just like everything else.
All I can say is it's a good thing with all the food that's been mentioned that Lent is over with. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda, starting with the jail security upgrades, acceptance of donations to the drug court, charitable gambling applications for Augusta Ball Club, a temporary liquor license for the Augusta Ball Club, the state of Minnesota partnership agreement, veteran service staffing adjustments, IT manual updates, letters of support for Highway 5 and County Road 18, and finally, our Health and Human Service and Commissioner warrants. With that, is there anything that should be polled? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda in its entirety?
Move approval. Udoman?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Lynch for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Udoman.
I just wanted to point out in 5.6, the adjustment, full-time equivalent in the Veteran Services Office, not sacrificing any service, but savings for the taxpayers. So kudos to Dan and his team for making that adjustment. Thank you.
Well said. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 6.1, a public hearing for a 2022 redistricting of Carver County Commissioner Districts. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy to open the public hearing. With that, we'll turn it over to Kendra Olson, our Elections and Licensing Manager. Welcome, Kendra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Thank you for having me. If we, let me get the screen back down.
Yep.
Yes, this morning, we're here to conduct a public hearing for the 2022 redistricting process. And we'll do a presentation, and then there'll be an opportunity for public input, and then they will have a motion to continue the public hearing at the end. Just, this is just an updated schedule that you've seen before, updated through. We are now holding the public hearing on April 19th, and then continuing that for next week's board meeting. And just a summary of what's.
Why don't you go ahead and do the motion to open the public hearing?
We did. We did.
You did?
Yep. No problem.
So we did use the current Commissioner Districts as our baseline. Districts one and five will be on the 2022 ballot due to Chan Hassen making some precinct boundary changes, and also a Waconia annexation of Lake Town Township that we'll touch on later in the presentation. Districts two and four will be on the ballot due to their four-year terms ending this year. And we do have, our options are limited due to the Waconia annexation of Lake Town Township and the city precinct boundary changes that we've, that you've seen before. And we have some options to present to you. Option A, District two is not within the 10% population range, so we would end up with three of our five districts not in the 10%. Districts four and five are not able to be, we cannot get that within the 10% population range due to annexation issues. With option A, District three would not be on the 2022 ballot. Options B and C does get District two into the 10% population range, and it does place District three onto the 2022 ballot. But again, the consistent factor is that Districts four and five are not within the 10% population range due to the annexation challenge that we had. And then we did receive a publicly submitted plan, which we are calling Option D, that we'll show you in this presentation. That plan does not meet statutory annexation requirements or the municipal precinct boundary requirements, but we will be sharing that with you today. And then there are other options possible that can be discussed and proposed. These are the statutory requirements that we have shared with you before, the factors in statute that drive the plans that are options in front of you and that you are considering. And you've seen this map before. This was just a reminder of the post-redistricting, the Commissioner District boundaries prior to the 2022 redistricting process and the population numbers at that time. population numbers at that time. And I won't spend a lot of time on this, because you have seen this information before, but this is just a summary of the population changes by municipality, with some significant increases in some municipalities and decreases in others. And we also, besides the county redistricting process, the step prior to this was the municipal redistricting, and everything highlighted in blue are the municipal precincts that were changed. So, we've had Chan, Chaska, Victoria, Waconia, all making simultaneous changes to their precinct boundaries this year that needed to be factored into your county redistricting And the significant piece is the new Waconia marriage that occurred. By statute, we do have to marry or lock together and combine precincts due to annexations and islands, to make sure that we are following the statutory requirement of creating contiguous boundaries. We have, in the past, had several across the county. They've had low populations, and the impact has not been significant as far as the redistricting options. However, in 2019, the city of Waconia did annex property from Lake Town Township. It created a large Waconia marriage, legal marriage, in the middle of the county with a significant population number, so that it did shift Lake Town Township with just under 2,000 from District 5 to District 4. And again, the impact is that there's a large population piece in the middle of the county that does significantly limit our redistricting options. And this is the piece, to give you a little glimpse, and you've seen this previously, but this area circled, that little island of orange, up in the northeast corner of the city of Waconia, that is the significant impact island, as far as the marriage that we have to do in the middle of the county. And we'll zoom in a little closer and show you. It's basically the simultaneous nature of this piece here, which is Lake Town Township within the city of Waconia, but then also within the same precinct. This is the dotted line precinct. This is also Waconia Township. And so, that does tie a number of marriages, legal marriages, that are locking together that we have to do in the middle of the county this year. And this is showing Option A. We will revisit that. It's basically the first map that we have to show you of this marriage and the city boundary changes. And these are the new precinct boundaries identified with their population numbers that are factoring into your plans to consider this year. Again, the overall impact from that Waconia marriage, the map we just previously showed you, that we'll spend a little more time on later, it does provide overall compactness for the five districts compared to 2012. It is the first time, however, it does cause the city of Victoria to be represented by three commissioners. And again, Districts 2, 4, and 5, at this point, would not be within the 10% goal. There are no options to get Districts 4 and 5 because of the annexations within the 10%. And we'll talk about two options that would get District 2 within the 10% goal. It does honor all marriages required by statute, and it does place District 5 on the ballot because of the shift from Lake Town Township. And as we've discussed before, Chanhassen boundary changes that they made, the municipal boundary changes and shifting between Districts 1 and 2 does place District 1 on the 2022 ballot this year. The municipal changes that Chaska did, there was some shifting, but it was, the number was less than 600. So, the municipal boundary changes that were made in the previous step in our redistricting process do not place District 3, Commissioner District 3, on the ballot for the 2022 election. And the area circled in there that you've seen before, that's showing the area where Chanhassen did make precinct boundary changes for their municipal precincts that deviate from the previously existing commissioner district boundaries. And two options do get District 2 within the 10% goal. They shift different Victoria precincts. There are two Victoria precincts that could be moved from District 3 to District 2, that would get us within that 10% goal. There are some impacts to the compactness and contiguity of some of the districts. Again, Option A, it honors the Waconia marriage and the city boundary changes that were made in 2022. It does still leave District 2 outside of the 10% range. Option B, what we're showing you there circled in purple, would be to move Victoria Precinct 3 and its corresponding population of 2,363 from District 3 into District 2. That does get District 2 within the 10% goal, in addition to Districts 1 and 3. Option C would be to move Victoria Precinct 2 with a slightly larger population from District 3 to District 2. It does make District 3 less compact and contiguous with that option. And Option D, it was a proposal received from the public, but again, it does not meet statute requiring them to honor the marriages created by annexations for the contiguity factor, and it does not meet the statutory requirement for the county commissioner district lines to follow the municipal precinct boundary lines that were established. And we can show you that map, and as you can see, we do have the breakage of the marriage in the center of the county. In this area here would have to be blue or orange. These cannot be different colors here, due to the statutory marriage requirement. And then, there are a couple of different areas where the plan does not follow the municipal precinct boundary lines. We were not provided with population numbers from this plan submitted by the public, so we don't have the estimated populations for this option. And just our next steps would be for us to close the public hearing next week, on the 26th, after it's continued from today's meeting. At that meeting, you would approve a 2022 redistricting plan that would redraw the new commissioner district boundaries. You will also have a resolution to determine the two-year or four-year terms going forward, so that you have the staggered term requirement. And then there will also be a resolution to approve Soil and Water 2022 redistricting plans and the Soil and Water boundaries. With the law changed, this is the first year that you're taking action to draw the commissioner or the Soil and Water district boundaries as well. And one of the things we want to mention is that the Soil and Water Board is considering recommending adopting a slightly different boundary plan to their board, to better represent the drainage patterns of Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek watershed. So, they would just basically be flipping two Chanhassen precincts between 1 and 2. And again, it does have a nominal impact on the 10% calculation, and the districts are less compact and contiguous, but for soil and water perspective, it does pervade, they are stating that it would provide better drainage and wetland representation. If they do decide to present a resolution with a slightly different plan, we would add that option as Option E in the next PowerPoint next week, but we will keep you updated as far as whether they have a resolution that would be similar to the county commissioner district lines or slightly different. It is not required for them to be exactly the same. And at this time, I believe we're ready for any public input.
Okay, questions? First of all, before we open up to the public hearing, maybe we should open up first. We'll have the public hearing first, and then open it up for questions for the board. Anybody from the public like to say a few words? Please, come up, identify yourself, and welcome.
Hello, my name's Rude Welch. I live in Carver, Minnesota. And, yeah, I think we have some unique challenges. I happened to be at the board meeting last week to hear the presentation in detail, so I figured I'd actually have the chance to come and speak. I know I'm on the Carver, City of Carver Planning Commission. We don't usually get a lot of public input, so here's one opinion. Yeah, I mean, I think we're stuck with B or C option, in my opinion. I think the compactness requirement and the boundary makes sense where the joining, right? So, the large Waconia-Gulu marriage issue, I don't think there's a good solution for that. But I don't think that's an excuse not to try and get the other districts as close to the 10% goal as possible. I guess if I would rank my priority, obviously, we have to follow the state law first, and then, I think the population, equal representation is obviously an important thing, right? So, anything you can do to get the districts as close to the 10% goal and as close in equal weighting is ideal. And then, on the B or C, as I recall, I think there was just some, you know, does this look more compact than the other? I think there's, you know, flip a coin, I think whatever you guys decide is probably a good pick between that one. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that input. Anybody else from the public would like to say a few words? Seeing none, I'll open up for the board. Any questions for Kendra? Commissioner Workman?
Boy, maybe a motion to close the public hearing.
Or let's continue. Continue it till next.
Oh, we're continuing it, sir. But I don't really have any comments. I have met with staff. I agree with one member of the public, I think the B or C, and we'll figure that out. And thank you for your service over there in Carver, where I was baptized.
Okay, any other questions for Kendra? Question with, how does this work with soil and water? If they have a different, would we be getting two different ballots? I mean, usually Soil and Water is on our same ballot, and if our districts, Soil and Water is different, how would they know what ballot to give? Explain that, would you please?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So, there will still be one ballot. By law, you are only supposed to get one ballot at the election, and we deal with that at the state and county level. We have districts that are going to be, once we get done with the redistricting process and we get everything identified, we will be making the changes in the state election database. So, for every address within Carver County, it's going to be assigned for Congressional District, Commissioner District, Soil and Water. And then, when we have our filings and people file for office, there is a state system that we're doing a lot of proofing and double-checking and triple-checking with, that identifies for each precinct which offices are on that ballot. And so, there will only be one ballot. We've had some changes in Soil and Water through the years. When I first started in Carver County, you did not elect by district, it was county-wide. And so, everybody in the county, whoever, whichever one was up on the ballot, got to vote on that. And then in 2016, they did make the change, and this is why, for the first time, your redistricting process is affecting not only the county commissioner district boundaries, but by statute, you are tasked as the entity that's supposed to also draw the Soil and Water. The metro counties were changed in 2016 to need to elect by district as opposed to at large. So, we, in the past few years, the terms have been staggered, so that they were intentional with that with Soil and Water, when they had to do their new process in 2016, where previously, Districts 1, 3, and 5, if the commissioner districts were on the ballot, then Soil and Water 2 and 4 were on the ballot. So, it was flip-flopped. We may still have that, depending upon how the choices are made for staggered terms by both boards, but it is possible that if they make a slight change, there would just be two or three precincts, so a small number of precincts, that would possibly have both on the ballot or neither. So, that would be the impact. But we would be handling that and making sure that everybody's ballots, the one ballot that they get, is going to have the appropriate office.
I think that was a polite way of saying, "Don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." Yeah, well, thank you very much.
You'll take care of it. I do have a commitment on that, yes.
Other comments or questions? County Attorney Metz?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the county attorney's office will provide the board with a legal opinion on the Soil and Water. We're still researching that issue about, you know, who has the final decision determination and other legal issues, so we will provide that to you and give you guidance on that. If I could, could I ask a question?
Please.
If Ms. Olson could go to the public input option with number, with letter D?
Sure.
Can you show the board and the public why that doesn't comply with the legal requirements for drawing the precincts and also this marriage?
Right, yes.
Kendra, please.
Yes. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and those here in the room, so if we start up here, the marriages that are required with this, the breaking point specifically is where the city of Waconia is not assigned to the same commissioner district in this plan as Waconia Township, because this island here, they have it showing in blue, it's actually, should be the same color, it's actually Waconia Township. And so, that requires anything from Lake Town Township, which gets married to city of Waconia because of this little island here. So, Lake Town Township gets married to city of Waconia. The existence of Waconia Township within Waconia then means that this whole Waconia Township here needs to be the same color or the same commissioner district as these other pieces to the east. And then we also have this little sliver here, that's a little harder to see, of the, that's actually Waconia Township property within the city of Mayor here. So, we have this large marriage that starts with the city of Mayor, grabs Waconia Township from this island, then that's Waconia Township. The existing, existence of Waconia Township within the city of Waconia ties the Waconia municipality, and then the existence of Lake Town Township within Waconia ties in this whole piece. And they're not showing it here, but there's actually a newer piece of Victoria, it's not touching the rest of Victoria, which is showing here in the green. There's actually some city of Victoria, which is a new precinct 5, that's also part of the large annexation that we have in the middle. So, that whole area of geography that I just walked through has to be the same commissioner district and the same color, for the lack of a better term, since we're representing district's boundaries in colors. The other issue that we have is this line right here, this actually is going through the middle of Victoria Precinct 3. So, this is actually, I believe, when I looked at it, is County Road 18, and so, they are splitting, their boundary for the commissioner districts is splitting through a municipal precinct, which is not allowed by law. And then, this is a little less clear as far as the line, but over here in Chanhassen, this line here going to the northeast does not follow the existing Chanhassen municipal boundaries. And by statute, the county commissioner districts are required to follow the municipal precinct boundaries. So, we cannot split through that area. So, there's a couple of different statutory issues with this.
Any other questions? Thank you. I think that was very important to point out to the public. We've seen some of this before, as you have, but the public has not, so it was very important to.
Mr. Chair? I'm curious, if D isn't viable, are A, B, and C still considered viable recommendations? Or are you excluding any of the three? We're going to stick with three going into next week?
The options A, B, and C are viable. They meet the statutory requirements of all the marriages, and following the precinct boundaries, and they address the compactness and the contiguity. And by statute, the 10%, if you can achieve the 10%, you can't break a municipal precinct in order to get within that 10%. But the county attorney can speak a little more completely on this issue, but these are viable options by the statute.
And then, just another question was, I think in your memo, Attorney Metz, there was six criteria, and there's some of them we can't meet because of the big chunks in the western side. But is there a weighting that your team goes through to say, based on math, not based on our emotion, that says, weighting those equally, one-sixth per criteria, we could get to a numeric answer versus an emotional answer?
Understand the questions? Commissioner Metz, Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Commissioner Urdeman, so there's not a mathematical equation, and it's, you're not supposed to obviously go on your gut or your instincts, but you should take any. but you should take into consideration, use your discretion or due diligence to balance out those criteria. Certainly, the goal is to have one person, one vote. You want to try to get as equal in population as you can if you can't meet that 10% rule. But that is probably one of the primary goals, is to try to have an equal population. But you have to consider all of the factors in that.
Okay. So I guess my ask, my question might have been answered, but is the 10% rule more or less of the same importance to the compact rule, more or less important than one of the other rules? Are they equally weighted, or would you put more emphasis on one or the other?
Attorney Metz?
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Commissioner Urdeman, you know, I'm not aware of any case law that has a certain weight or importance to that. And so I think the important part is, again, to consider all of those different factors. One doesn't have any more weight than another, but there is case law that talks about you want to try to get as equal in population, which is just common sense, right? But consistent with the contiguity, with compactness, with the 10% rule, if you can meet those. So it's a balancing. But I think what's most important for this board, what we've directed, is that you, that your consideration discretion is thoughtful and specific when you make your determination and you have the discretion that you explain why you're choosing a certain option and why you are rejecting other options, like we went through in terms of option D, is there's no favoritism. It's just a matter of, that doesn't meet the basic requirements of the precincts and the marriage. So that's a concern, certainly from a legal perspective. The others, we're trying to get options for the board that are as close to these as possible. And again, anyone can submit options, and certainly the Commissioners can as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Other questions, thoughts? If not, I think we're to the point where we could take a motion to continue the public hearing until April 26th.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch, to continue the public hearing until April 26th at 9:00 AM at a county boardroom meeting. Hearing the motion and the second, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will continue this next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Urdeman.
I think there's a message from somebody in the general public that's trying to watch this and is unable to. Does this get, is this streaming live that we're aware of?
I was gonna, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Urdeman, I was gonna mention that during my reports. Live stream is down.
Okay.
Again, however, we'll, we'll get somebody in to try and fix that, hopefully permanently.
Okay.
However, we still are recording. So that will be posted ultimately.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do have WebEx up and running, too. So anybody tapping into WebEx is in.
Great. Thanks.
With that, we'll go on to item 6.2, 2022 Personnel Policy Manual and Health and Safety Policy Manual Updates. With that, we'll turn it over to Carrie Andrica, our Employee Relations Division Director. Carrie is hopefully speaking to us remotely.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
I can hear you, Carrie, but I cannot see you. Do we have video, or is that the problem?
That's not the problem. Eric?
Can you?
Can you pull up the video? WebEx?
My video, my video appears to be on. Hold on.
Okay, we're just waiting on this end. Hopefully, we can get it.
Yep.
Now we're getting it. Thank you, Carrie.
That was Kendra, by the way. Nice job. I think that, that time's out.
Oh, thank you very much. Carrie, take it away.
All right. Sounds good. We have a PowerPoint, too, and Mia Johnson will be helping with advancing the slides on that. Employee Relations periodically reviews policies contained in our Health and Safety Policy Manual and the Personnel Policy Manual and brings recommendations for updates forward to the board for approval. Today, I'll be highlighting the updates recommended for various policies prepared by Employee Relations. Policy updates promote positive, productive, and effective workplace culture and practices, support attraction and retention of a well-qualified workforce, support compliance with law and regulations, prioritize health and safety, and improve clarity and ease of understanding county policies for readers. Our Health and Safety Policy Manual updates today include modifications in three different policies. So I will briefly walk through the highlights for each of those, starting out with the county's motor vehicle policy. Key objectives of this policy include reducing the frequency and severity of vehicle-related accidents, reducing the risk of injuries resulting from motor vehicle accidents, and reducing the county's cost of insurance as well as other expenses. This policy also defines expectations for safe and prudent use of motor vehicles by county employees as well as volunteers. The 2022 updates include additional language addressing limited personal vehicle use in accordance with Minnesota statutes. Personal use is limited to that which is clearly incidental to the use of the vehicle for county business in accordance with statute. The recommended language changes provide additional clarity for readers in our policy and are in line with current law as well as current practice. The Respiratory Protection Program. This policy serves to minimize occupational exposure to respiratory hazards in accordance with OSHA standard 1910.134. The Respiratory Protection Program primarily outlines activities and requirements for employees who are required to wear a respirator in the course and scope of their job to protect from various hazards. In some cases where respiratory protection is not required based on review of the job, employees may be permitted to voluntarily use a respirator for increased comfort or to avoid airborne exposure that does not exceed safety thresholds set by OSHA standards. In 2021, voluntary provisions were added to this policy to support the county in permitting voluntary respiratory protection use in certain situations. The recommended 2022 updates provide clarity regarding guidance for users who only wear filtering face mask respirators voluntarily. Our third policy in this section is the lactation support policy. This policy outlines resources and support that the county provides for lactating and breastfeeding employees. An amendment to the Minnesota Women's Economic Security Act, also referred to as WISA, now requires time spent expressing breast milk during the workday, which occurs beyond regular paid or unpaid break times, to be paid time for a year following giving birth. Prior to the change in law, the county provided reasonable unpaid break time for the expression of breast milk pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Responsive to the WISA amendment, the recommended policy updates provide for paid time for expressing milk where additional time is required for this purpose beyond scheduled break times. Additionally, policy language has been updated and streamlined throughout this policy and guides employees to connect with Employee Relations for additional information regarding lactation locations across the county and options to support them in the workplace. In 2018, Carver County achieved designation as a breastfeeding-friendly workplace by the Minnesota Department of Health. And this designation acknowledges the county workplace commitment to act as a model for the community by supporting healthy families. So updates to the lactation support policy today align with the county's ongoing efforts to provide a workplace that supports the health of employees, families, and our community. Next, I'll move to the Personnel Policy Manual Updates. And those will include updates and modifications in three different policy areas. The county's personnel policy addressing leaves of absence, Minnesota pregnancy and parental leave, and the Women's Economic Security Act rights also briefly addresses breastfeeding and lactation support in our workplace. The recommended updates in this policy align the policy with the same changes discussed as part of the lactation support policy, supporting continued compliance with the requirements of Minnesota law. In the recruitment and selection policy, language updates provide greater flexibility in the staffing and recruitment process. With appropriate approvals, updated language allows the county to offer an adjusted paid time off or vacation accrual rate to a job candidate, supporting the county's ability to attract and retain a well-qualified workforce, especially in those positions that are particularly difficult to recruit. The final policy inspection is our telework policy update. Employee Relations is also recommending the adoption of a complete update to the county's telework policy, which outlines the framework for an effective telework program that we believe will serve us well now and into the future. This policy update is a little bit more significant, so I'll spend a bit more time discussing relevant highlights related to the telework policy this morning. The updated telework policy recognizes significant shifts in employment practices since the pandemic and supports a more widespread use of telework as a business strategy for the county to continue effectively delivering services into the future. Our former telework policy was located in the Administrative Policy Manual, and at this time, we are also requesting relocating this policy into the Personnel Policy Manual. Carver County recognizes the benefit of providing flexible remote work options while using technology to enhance customer service, increase employee productivity and morale, reduce the cost and environmental impact of commuting, and reduce the need to expand county office and parking space. While the county's most recent space study clearly outlined the need for significant future space expansion investment, an increased focus on telework as a business strategy is very timely for our organization, and we anticipate that it will reduce impending physical space expansion requirements, resulting in reduced future costs. The county's transition to increased telework prompted by the pandemic resulted in increased innovation and development of additional service delivery options to better meet community needs. Flexibility offered through telework arrangements supports the county's objectives to effectively deliver public services through a well-qualified and engaged workforce focused on service excellence. Telework is identified as a key business strategy that can give the county an edge when it comes to attraction or retention of a diverse and well-qualified workforce, capitalizing on enhanced innovation and effective use of technology, expansion of service delivery options, and flexibility to meet more community member needs, and to support workforce morale and engagement in a highly competitive labor market that we are currently experiencing. Telework arrangements presently at the county have proven highly successful for a significant portion of the county's workforce, as our organization had to rapidly adjust and convert to an extensive amount of telework responsive to the pandemic. Currently, close to 70% of the non-law enforcement county workforce is engaged in some form of teleworking. A portion of the workforce is primarily remote, while some employees follow regularly scheduled hybrid approaches, splitting their work weeks between onsite office coverage, focused best time at their remote work locations, and delivering services directly within the The county is positioned to capitalize on gains recognized during the pandemic, including enhanced innovation and flexible service delivery approaches, establishing advantages related to workforce attraction and retention, and incorporating telework as a key business strategy that can serve the county well into the future. The updated telework policy that we're bringing forward today supports these objectives and provides a high-level framework for the telework program. Additional supports and guidance will be provided for both employees and management, including but not limited to telework guidelines, which provide greater detail and practical information to support management of successful telework arrangements and continued effective service delivery. Employees interested in teleworking will be required as part of our process to complete and submit a telework application, and that will go through a management review and approval process. Then the final step of the evaluation and approval process will establish a telework program agreement with each teleworker as well as their management. As we move forward, county leadership and management will be responsible to monitor and provide management oversight to evaluate and support continued effective telework and service delivery approaches within their, within areas of their workforce that operate through either a remote or hybrid work arrangement. Overall, the county intends to capitalize on the enhancements and successes that were recognized in the shift to increased use of telework during the pandemic, and continue to study and hone effective telework management approaches to position the organization for success and best service to the community. So those are the highlights related to the telework policy and program, as well as the other policies that Employee Relations is bringing forward, requesting approval of today. And the action requested at this time would be a motion to adopt the Carver County Personnel Policy and Health and Safety Policy Updates as recommended by the Employee Relations Division, and then also removing the former telework policy from the Administrative Policy Manual.
Well, thank you, Carrie. Any questions, comments by the board? Commissioner Urdeman?
Mr. Chair, a lot of work here. We just get to see it in small little bites, but I know there's a lot of research, a lot of comparative to what other people are doing. And I bounced a couple of these things off my wife, because when we had our kid, she was in the workforce, and she had to go through some of the things. So I think that we're gold standard when it comes to the lact, I always say it wrong, lactation support. My wife works for a company of over 75,000 employees, and they don't have anything like this. They don't even have a policy. So kudos to you for doing that. One thing I'd like to take off the line is, I was looking at the benefits that we offer people that have had a baby. So I want to look at that in the future, not today. But most of my comments and questions come as it relates to the telework policy. I think you've done a lot of work. You gave the board a lot of context for how you went about that. And my mind goes back to, how do we inspect if we're getting what we want out of our folks that are working from home, especially knowing that the biggest amount of money that we spend or invest in our community is within people? And 70%, I think, was your number of our staff participates in work from home. Can you talk about some of our strategies, other than good managers that manage well, to keep an eye on our folks in a way that says the taxpayers are getting the most out of them? Because I think there's some, sometimes there's myths, and I think sometimes there's reality, that there's some people that abuse these policies, and I think that's why we have them. But what I don't know is what our steps are if somebody recognizes abuse or brings that forward. Is there, is there a process for us to, to look into that and, and address that, so that we make sure that our taxpayers are getting the most amount of money? And I just share this from a contextual perspective. When I worked at Best Buy Corporate, I was a corporate guy, and we had people in the field. And there was always the rub against, oh, those field guys aren't doing anything. Oh, those corporate guys are schmoes. And when we left the, when we left the, the gap between those two things, people filled in that gap relatively quickly. And my belief is that work from home is an asset for our community, that the individuals reap benefit for some of the flexibility, some of the savings of not having to commute. I also think that our taxpayers in our county should get tangible savings from that as well. It's just hard to put your finger on that dollar amount. And so my question is, is when there is abuse, or if there is abuse, how that gets reported and how we look into it.
Carrie, how can you, how can we monitor what's going on with telecommuting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Carver County has, for many years, invested significantly in a performance-based culture, in a culture that is focused on setting goals with all of our employees across the workforce, and with focusing on how management can support and coach employees to not only identify goals but work toward them and meet those goals and objectives, and then supporting management in monitoring and assessing for outcomes and goals achievement and objectives-based performance across the employees that they are responsible for working with. So I think these are key strategies that will continue to be especially important with telework. I think those strategies that the county has invested in and trained on with our management team have helped the county in being able to make such a successful transition to telework. We were kind of forced to make a really rapid transition to telework with the pandemic. But I think all of that work that the county had done to invest in a strong performance-based culture, performance-focused culture, really paid off in helping us to be successful through that transition. And I believe that continuing to remain focused on effective performance management, management strategies will continue to be vital to the success of the telework program. So really, a lot of, when you're considering office-based work, a lot So really, a lot of, when you're considering office-based work, a lot of those same goals and outcomes-based evaluation strategies are going to be effective, whether the employee is sitting in a typical office environment or if they're working remotely. For a lot of supervisors and managers, how they're monitoring performance outcomes may see really little change when converting from an in-office environment to a hybrid, remote, or dispersed work environment with their team. When it comes to any sort of performance concerns, we have really invested through training with our management team and just through example, and invested focus of the county management team across the county. We have really focused on effective performance management strategies, and that includes if there are any performance concerns that have been noted, issues that have arisen that we in Employee Relations partner with management to address those concerns effectively.
And then, thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Urdeman?
A couple of things, and I talked to some peers at AMC Meeting, local peers and otherwise, but I'm just going to rattle off a few things that have worked for them, maybe they could work for us as well, and maybe we've considered them. I don't need necessarily a comment, but one of our peers said that they have had great success by having an employee declare one location versus any location to work from home. Some have said that they need to require a locked door so that they can work behind it because of the sensitivity of the documents. Others have adopted policies that include two times a year where they can turn in technology that's usable but not being used, because sometimes as you adjust your workspace, you end up with technology that sits on a shelf, and it doesn't get used for two or three years, and then it gets turned in, and it's unusable. Some have employed picture and video audits to make sure that the space is safe for our employees, because really, we're going from a handful of locations to maybe 400 locations from a safety, security, trip-and-fall perspective. Some have used resource that the county has provided, a background to use on Zoom calls or the like, so that there's a uniform and professional background. And then others have prescribed response rates, specific out-of-office and phone setups with expectation that those messages, emails, calls are responded to within a certain amount of time, and certainly before the end of the business day. So those are some things that I'm sure you've considered, but others have had luck with that have employed these, maybe even earlier than us. And then finally, just to call out to Pete and his staff, because I don't know that we'd be in this position without the work of Pete Henshaw's team, because I think that we are gold standard when it comes to equipping people with the technology that they needed. And a lot of people got caught on their heels through particularly the COVID experience, but we weren't caught on our heels. So congratulations and thank you to Pete and his team. So just some thoughts. Thanks.
I think that's well said, that the pandemic, if it did anything, it taught us that there are other ways to doing things. And this remote telecommuting was one of the things that we, by necessity, gravitated to right off the bat, and the staff, employees took it and ran with it, and have done a good job, if I don't say so myself. And we still have things to learn. We're learning from others, but yet we've gone a long ways, and it's really worked well for us. Other questions, comments? Seeing none at this point, we have an action requested. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the Carver County Personnel Policy and the Health and Safety Policy Updates as recommended, and then also remove the former telework policy from the Administrative Policy Manual.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Carrie. With that, we'll move on to item 7.1, the settlement agreements for right-of-way. Again, we have Mr. Pat Lambert, our senior right-of-way agent, here with some more settlements. Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you have before you today five additional settlements for the County Road 24 project. All of them fell within the parameters of fair negotiated settlements or last written offer amounts. There's nothing unusual about any of them.
How many more do we have, Pat?
You're going to have one more on the meeting of May 3rd, unless I can get it switched to next week, because the guy won't let us on his property until he gets paid. So if it's allowable on next week, then we will be able to get on his property a week and a half earlier. And the project has started, and we need to get on.
Well, thank you for all the work that you've done negotiating with these separate landowners. And I'll be honest, the only reason we're seeing these, nothing's really changed, is we have one Commissioner that is going to abstain from this for possible conflicts. So with that, the motion is to, got it in front of me here, moved it. The motion is to accept the resolution authorizing the settlement of compensation for acquisition of real property interest needed for the Highway 24 project. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstain? Commissioner Lynch? So it passes with one abstention. Thank you very much. With that, it brings us to the end of our meeting. Oh, we'll have a Commissioner, County Administrator report first. We're going to go into a work session after this, but Administrator Hemsey.
Just a couple of quick items. As I mentioned, the livestream was down, up and running about midway through, so apologize for that. We'll do our diligence to make sure that's covered. But again, that doesn't mean that we aren't meeting what we need to meet in terms of recording the meeting and allowing folks to watch it. So we're covering those bases. And then again, Rod Franks' celebration, celebration or farewell? Farewell is probably a better word. We're not happy to see him go, that's for sure. EOC, 11:30 to 1, and then Chan, brewery, around 4:30.
Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch. And we're going to go into a work session talking about the reorganization of public works and also the county fleet and mileage. Any, no discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
We're going to keep WebEx up. I believe Carrie wants to participate.